Let's do it. Welcome, everyone here and at home to the Eugene City Council January 14th meeting. First of all, you'll hear my voice is still a little squeaky from a cold I'm just getting over. I'm getting on a plane in the morning, so I'm hoping I'm over and not going to go add something to it. But anyway, I want to start out today by, once again, thanking our staff and everyone who was involved with the state of the city. And I also want to welcome our new councillor to the table, Greg Evans. Welcome, Greg.
Thank you, Mayor.
And so we'll get about the business of today. And we have something really quite special today. We have an under ceremonial matters. We have with us the great honor of having University of Oregon volleyball team. You make up.
Good luck.
Tonight, we are honored to have as our guests members of the 2012 University of Oregon Women's Volleyball Team and their coaching staff. When I say your name, if you can stand up, that would be great, so we can recognize you. Robin Mullins, Athletic Director.
All right.
Great. Lisa Peters, Senior Associate Athletic Director, Senior Women's Administrator. And here are the coaches. Jim Moore, Head Coach. Justin Lockhart, Assistant Coach. Katrao, Assistance Coach. Director of Operations. The players. And if I've forgotten anybody, I'd just apologize. This is a list I have. So if anybody's not on it and you're here and I didn't say your name, I am very sorry. Okay, players. Chelsea Ashen. Martine Bentendorf. Emily Burkott Gonzalez. Dennis Finley. Nelson McGee. Lauren Martin. Lauren Plum. Amy Williams. Ray Bear. These student athletes just completed a historic season with successes both on and off the court. Some highlights include: The team posted a school-record 30 wins en route to the NCAA Tournament Championship game in Louisville, Kentucky. They staked a best-ever second-place finish in the Pac-12 with a 16-4 record. Their road to the national championship game included wins over the No. 4 seed Nebraska in a regional final and the No. 1 seed Penn State in the semifinal. The Ducks led the nation in kills per set. All right. Their success generated enormous community support. The U of O welcomed eight of its top 25 all-time biggest home crowds ever and the second-best attendance mark for the Stanford game in November with over 5,000 people cheering them on in the Mat Knight Arena. A senior outside hitter, Elena Burgsma, became the first Duck volleyball player to win Pac-12, American Volleyball Coaches Association, and Hana National Player of the Year Award. Wow. She ranked fifth nationally in points and kills. Senior setter Lauren Plum was named Pac-12 Setter of the Year, and she led the nation in assists. Burgsma and Plum made earned All-American First Team honors. Sophomore outside hitter Liz Brenner was a Second Team All-America Choice. Senior outsider hitter Katherine Fisher picked up her third Academic All-American Award and her second time on the first team. Burgsma earned her first Academic All-American Award landing on the third team. With all of their hard work, leading to honors in both athletics and academics, these women serve as great role models for young people everywhere. We in the city of Eugene are so proud to have you here with us tonight. We honor your success and are grateful for the vitality you contribute to this community. Thank you all. Come on, come on, line up in front of us. We'd like a group shot.
All right.
Now I have to stand up, otherwise you won't.
Feel free to join.
Is there anybody under six foot in this group?
So, Rob, do I get this to you?
Get going, get going. Yeah. There you go. There you go.
It's not often you feel short, huh?
Here's our evening congratulations to the team.
That's hilarious.
I don't know if you can see us over this one.
That's what I was saying. Stand on the chair.
Hurt people in front.
Okay, all right. Go Ducks, go Eugene. Yeah.
Great job, ladies. Great job.
You. Proud of you.
My disappointment was my old basketball coach, John.
Job, job.
Proud of you. We didn't need him this year.
Well, that was so much. I'm sorry, I couldn't understand. I gave it to him. Did you want a more official picture? I thought that, I couldn't think of a more fun picture than all of us with the entire team.
Even though he couldn't see us.
Even though they can't see us over the top. The best shot ever. Transition, transition. We're going to go now to election of City Council Officers for 2013. Council President.
I move to elect George Polling as President of the City Council for 2013.
Second. Moved and seconded.
I thought Claire was supposed to second.
That's a myth.
You're embarrassing her. All right. All those in favor, please indicate. Everybody's hand up? Nobody in opposition? Okay. So, President Polling steps up. All right. And then, you want to do the Vice President?
Yes, I will. I move to elect Chris Pryor as Vice President of the City Council for 2013.
Second. Moved and seconded. Okay, all those in favor, please indicate. It's everybody? Okay. None in opposition? So we now have a new President and Vice President. And before we do the total transition, we want to thank George Brown for serving this last year. Thank you, George, very much. Okay, here we go. Next thing is the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the City Council on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, your city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light says it's done. So, I'm actually opening the forum, and we have 16 people signed up. So first up is Terrell Purvis, followed by Conrad Barney. As you see, this is our next evolution in trying to get the speaker right and get you close enough to the microphone.
My name is Terrell Purvis. I live in Eugene. I come here to speak on behalf of the homeless tonight. I worked this year as firefighter, and I spent many months out camping this year. I was in the place where I was born. It was not that bad. It was a red bell, it was a car, it was a great summer. Then I came back here after the season was over, and I decided that I would go ahead and camp out in the public, like, oh. So I spent the last month and a half on the streets. I can't tell you how hard it is to live on the streets. I call it home, really. People were dying on it. People were getting sick out there. It was going downhill, probably, but it was. And there's nothing that we can do that, there's people that are down there volunteering and advocating. People were around. It was such a great problem that we just can't deal with it. I know that we worked all last year trying to come up with solutions. I really appreciate all the effort that everybody's been doing. I really appreciate all the stuff that's out there right now that I've been learning about the last month and a half, with the people on the streets, and I'm trying to build something. It's been awesome to find out something out. All I can say is that we really need to work harder and get into these parts, but I really appreciate the warm noon centers and the people that operate those. They're awesome people. We need to fight some things, right? Because that's the dynamic of studying this in Eugene, studying this with the time now and say and across the nation. And connecting up with different people to try to come up with different options that we can assist. All I can really, what I really want to come here and say is that we need to really focus this year on that issue. And I think we've come up with a lot of different options to look forward to. And I hope that you guys will spend this year settling this issue and not letting it drag off of us here.
Conrad Barney is next, followed by Reagan Clark.
Mic's not working.
We got some mic issues, Mayor.
Oh, I do?
They do.
They do.
My mic isn't working. Well, that was such a good speech.
There we go.
That was so good.
We heard it.
Ready for me? My name is Conrad Barney. I'm on my 34th day of a hunger strike to create awareness for the shelter needs of our unhoused community. I'm here today to bring to your attention the need to make changes in legislation, specifically Municipal Code 4.815. Due to time constraints, I won't read it for you, but I encourage you to do so. What I have to say may give you a new perspective on it. First and foremost, I recognize that sanitation and cleanliness are important for ensuring the health and safety of our public. However, the prohibition of quote-unquote "camping" is not the solution to these issues. In fact, it causes more harm than good. It's worded in a way that implies that those with nowhere to go at night are dirty and unsanitary. I assure you that's not true. And to have legislation that says otherwise is audacious and it sets an example and precedent that condones prejudices, discrimination, and disrespect of diversity. More importantly, the enforcement of this code results in sleep deprivation, exhaustion, and exposure to the elements, which are far more hazardous to our health and safety than the potential for an unclean area. Once again, I implore you to take another look at our legislation. Failure to change laws and regulations that cause harm to our citizens is a failure to uphold duty as civil servants. I'm confident that you guys will choose to do the right thing, and I look forward to working with you in the future to help pave the road of peace and prosperity for all Eugenians. The implementation of care and nurture from a basis of understanding into our policies is a necessity if we have any hope of achieving true equality and freedom for future generations. We have a lot of work to do. I'm ready to continue the fight. I urge you to do the same, preferably with expediency, because I'm starving and I could really go for a cheeseburger right now. Thank you for your time.
Reagan Clark is next, followed by Helen Leguri.
My name is Reagan Clark. I've come before this assembly tonight to address the homeless issue, but not in the typical way. Homelessness is a symptom of a greater social ill, an ill that we face, all face every day. Right now, our country stands on a precipice. We are trillions of dollars in debt. Our elected officials no longer represent us. Instead, they represent the corporations that control the funds. They need to be elected. As a result of this, we're in an endless war due to our thirst for oil. We spend billions upon billions on a war on drugs while we have homeless people freezing in the streets. We degrade the so-called unalienable rights that our forbearers fought and died to give us, all in the collective irrational fear of an impoverished culture thousands of miles away. A culture where we are the terror in the night, coming without warning in the form of a drone that is like an angel of death, leaving the corpses of men, women, and children in its wake. We are consuming our world's resources without consideration for the generations to come. In fact, some peer-reviewed literature is now indicating that unless we change our collective ways, we may never, we may see a human catastrophe the likes the world has never seen within our lifetimes. The time for change is now, and it must change here. Any less means that only more suffering and more death will follow. So what is the solution? How do we bring back the prosperity to our cities? How do we turn America back into a net exporter? How do we end our reliance on poisonous fossil fuels that fuel our indifferent lifestyles and place our young people in harm's way and result in the deaths of millions of innocent people overseas? How do we ensure that everyone has a safe place to stay at night, healthy food to eat, and a community that cares for them? The answer lies in an unsurprising place: our local communities and with people like all of you. We need local systems that provide for the needs of all people: gainful employment, healthy food, and access to the essential things in life, so that we might reach their highest potential and find them happiness. I've been traveling for the last two years to find solutions for these issues. What I have found is that we literally need to relocalize everything: local banking systems, local food systems, and local fabrication of durable goods, and most importantly, local governance. Corporatocracy and bureaucracy have failed us. They have attracted those who covet power above all else, those who wish to dominate others and have the failings of utter disregard for the sanctity of human life. But we, the people, have the means to take the power back and solve the vast majority of societal problems all at the same time. All we need to do is work together. I'm calling on this body.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks very much. Helen Leguri is next, followed by Andrew Cottrell.
Helen Leguri, Eugene, War II. There sure been a lot of action on the streets and coverage in the Eugene Weekly and the Register Guard since you last heard me out. Sleeps and its supporters have kept the goal of safe, legally entitled emergency places to sleep front and center in our community. Tonight, I employ City Council to direct the Police Department to absolutely abstain from rousting sleepers in public places. It is cruel to wake people up in the dark hours, find them, and force them to move on. To where? In the dark. I look forward to a rewrite of City Ordinance 4.815 that secures compassion for the vulnerable rather than mandating such cruel action. Until such time and without cost to the city, City Council can act now as an emergency measure to permit the unhoused citizens to sleep without disturbance between 9:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. on public property. Recently, there were messages written in chalk on the sidewalk wrapping around the 7th and Pearl Corner at the old federal building. The proverbial handwriting on the wall, I took it. Longfellow wrote, "If we could read the secret histories of our enemies, we would find in each person's life sorrowing and suffering enough to disarm all hostility." Let me read it again, substituting some of the words. If we could hear the secret histories of the unhoused, we would find in each person's life sorrowing and suffering enough to disarm all fear. Councilors, all of you may not see the handwriting on the wall yet. Moving us to be a more compassionate city is happening. And you may not recognize that we have a prophet among us: one who has passion for the vulnerable unhoused, who speaks truth to power again and again, and is unstoppable.
Thank you. Andrew Cottrell is next, followed by Mark Hubbell.
My name is Andrew Cottrell. I've been a resident of Eugene 33 of my 36 years. I grew up in the friendly neighborhood. Excuse me, this mic. I grew up in the friendly neighborhood. Now I live in Councilor Soret's more affordable ward. Of the 33 years that I've lived in Eugene, I've been fully employed, adequately employed one of those years. The two years that I spent in Portland, I was fully employed, both years. It's not an easy place to make it here. Thankfully, the weather's good. You've seen me here before, a couple of times, in support of sleeps. Tonight, I'm going to talk about what I want. I want the United States to step up and meet the international standard of living set forth in the United Nations International Covenant on Economic, Cultural, and Social This is a basic standard for the world. I have faith that the United States can exceed the basic minimum standard. Thank you.
Mark Hubbell is next, followed by Peter Grotichelli. We need to be quiet, please. Mark Hubbell?
Mark Hubbell, Eugene, proud member of Right to Dream Too out of Portland, and sleeps here in Eugene. We are here to give some small thanks to some folks for small steps that were taken over the last couple of weeks. And this is the implementation of the Conestoga Huts. Those that designed them put them into implementation, and Council for actually allowing them as alternative housing methods. Very good. Once again, these are small steps. Now, we cannot stop, or you cannot stop, at this small step. There are more steps to be taken for those countless that nobody sees, that are out there right now, facing the cold, not knowing what tonight might bring, what tomorrow might bring. These people are doing for themselves what you take for granted. And this is providing some type of shelter and warmth for themselves and those that are with them. You know, there are folks here tonight that are paying the price. There are folks that I don't even know that have already paid too high a price for being unsheltered, or at least allowed the privilege or opportunity to provide shelter for themselves from the weather. I'm just going to quote, "Compassion brings us to a stop, and for a moment, we rise above I would like you, the council, to consider what your role could and should be in this urban theater that we call life.
Peter Grotichelli is next, followed by Sue Walling.
My name's Peter Grotichelli, and I am homeless. I travel around all the wards. So, let's talk about that fellow who just, disturbed fellow over there who just left. It's unfortunate, he hasn't got a happy place to go. And then we see addressed in the council today, all these passionate folks here, all addressing the same issue. Well, it looks pretty ominous to me, doesn't it, what's going on here? What was our friend Reagan Clark saying about the way our civilization's going? Well, I mean, and let's look at the increase in poverty and the fact that often the only career choice for a young person is the military, right? Well, things are going wrong here. Things are not sustainable. And so what are we going to do about this? I think what is required is a fundamental change, some fundamental change that goes beyond the capacity of government, well, government as it is today, right? Because our demand, the demand of all of those who've spoken before you so far, I believe everybody is that we have legalized camping within the city limits. However, this is an impossible demand. We're demanding the impossible because there's much established law regarding land use that would be eradicated were this camping to be legalized within city limits. It would change so many laws that engenders resistance from many elements of government. And so it's probably not going to happen, but I think it'd be awesome if you guys thought about doing it anyway, because the communes, you know, the communes that were going to establish these free, open communes that the American people seem to want to establish, you know, they are going to get us out of this mess, I think, giving people a meaningful existence, allowing them to live together, to provide shelter and food for each other together. This is the way out of it, and this is what's going to be in the future, and your grandchildren might think it's awesome if you guys, like, at least, you know, voiced us some support of this. And I know you've all got a lot of power, and maybe you can do something, because things are happening in this city. A lot of travelers come through here, and we're going to do things. We're working together. We're getting together. We're not all dispersed like we were last year. So things are going to happen, and I'd appreciate if you all played a part. Thank you.
Sue Walling is next, followed by Hugh Pritchard.
I live at 108 High Street in Clare Soret's district, but I lived for many years in South Eugene. I'm also a member of the Street Repair Review Panel, or SERUP as I call it, partly because of the abbreviation SSRRP, but also because of the sappy praise I heap on the Public Works Department for the incredible job they've done with this bond measure. They've not only restored smooth road surfaces, but they've, smooth road surfaces on time and under budget and with improved techniques for reducing carbon emissions, but they've also managed to implement parts of the pedestrian bicycle master plan. They've meticulously followed the rules of the bond measure, yet they've found ways to make incredible improvements for bicycling, not only by fixing the off-street paths, but also by things like widening the bike lane on High Street, building a buffered bike lane on Coburg Road, creating a new bike lane on 24th Street, and a great new cycle track on Alder, on Alder Street. Thanks to their hard work and creativity, we're starting to build the pedestrian bicycle master plan, even though we don't have anything but bond measures and spare change to rely on. The passage of a new bond measure last November creates an opportunity to complete one of the most important projects in the master plan, which is Willamette Street from 24th to 29th. to 29th. Willamette will be repaved during the next five years, thanks to the bond measure, and this creates a unique opportunity to create the bicycling and pedestrian infrastructure that it desperately needs. Safe bicycle and pedestrian access on Willamette Street is critical, because to people, when people in South Eugene hear the term 20-minute neighborhood, it's Willamette Street you immediately think of. Willamette has everything you need for a 20-minute neighborhood. It's got grocery stores, hardware stores, banks, fast food, slow food, pet food, bakeries, bars, sporting goods, bookshops. It's got everything you need, including single-family housing, multifamily housing, senior housing, nearby schools, and Amazon Park just a few blocks away. It's got everything, except a street that you can walk or ride a bike on. We need bike lanes on Willamette. There already are good routes for riding a bike near Willamette Street. People on bikes routinely ride on Oak Street or Portland when they're trying to avoid Willamette Street. But if you live in South Eugene, you don't want to avoid Willamette Street, you want to go there. You simply can't reach most businesses on Willamette Street without being on the street, any more than you can watch an Oregon Ducks football game from Martin Luther King Boulevard. Close just doesn't count. At present, most people don't ride a bike on Willamette Street, even if they ride a bike everywhere else. It just seems too hazardous. People who do ride on the street generally ride on the sidewalk, where they scare the socks off of pedestrians, and they can't be seen by motorists. For the safety of bicyclists and pedestrians and motorists, we need bike lanes on Willamette Street, which is why the pedestrian bicycle master plan put them there. Bike lanes would provide a designated space for bicyclists, as well as a buffer between pedestrians and the traffic moving down the street. When people can safely walk and bike on Willamette Street, you'll have a 20-minute neighborhood. There's a study underway to figure out options for making Willamette Street safer. I hope you just keep an open mind, and let's see what the options are.
Hugh Pritchard is next, followed by Reverend Wayne Martin.
Hi, Hugh Pritchard. I'm in Councilor Zelenka's Ward. I appreciate everything Sue just had to say about bicycles. I'm a bicycler daily and a car driver also. I want to talk about another street that's easier, another difficult street that's easier, Charnelton. Capstone is going to be fouling up Olive Street for a good year in their construction, and I'm all for that. But if you're in South Eugene coming north, Olive is one of your big choices now. A great choice would be Charnelton, except the way we've messed it up over the past 35 years. Let me describe what it's like to drive north on Charnelton out of South Eugene. You're coming on a two-way street, and you get to 13th. It is now one way, the wrong way. You must turn off, go over to Olive or Lincoln, go two blocks, come back, and now you get to Charnelton, and it's, you can go north again. It's two ways. You go two blocks, you're blocked again by Charnelton being the wrong way, and you have to go, this time you need to go only to the right to Olive. If you go the other way, you're in trouble. You go three blocks north to 6th and come back to Charnelton, and it's now two ways until it peters out down the railroad tracks. So it has five changes in eight blocks, all of them against you if you're coming in from the south. And I think it would be easy to fix. It's a matter of paint and signage. I know there'll be issues, but I think it's something you could do soon, and it will really help with the Capstone problem. Getting into, if you think about Charnelton actually working, it's a wonderful gateway to the west side of downtown from the, from the south. So I'm hoping you'll think about that as you're wrestling with the Capstone problems, and think about it for the future of downtown. It will be a great entrance that way, and I hope it's cheap. Thanks.
Next is Wayne Martin, followed by Jean Stacy.
I'm Reverend Wayne Martin. I moved here 10 months ago to be with two of my six children and five of my 10 grandchildren. It's a great place. I live at 1223 Washington Street, bought a home there, am happy there. I'd like to compliment you on your city and your exercising of good judgment on this city. I love the Art Walk, I go to the mall. I love the Bach Festival, have become very close friends with Roy Salzman. I love the Bike Paths. Well done. It's like Berkeley with Bike Paths. Good place. I love your Riverside Parks. They're astounding. Great sports events, Olympic trials, volleyball teams like the ones we just met, not to mention You have a very creative business community. It never ceases to amaze me, what I read in the B section of the paper. I've found your police force to be courteous and extremely helpful when I get lost. I'd like to offer one respectful suggestion. It's ironic that it appears that I'm piggybacking on something I had no intention of it. I'd like to request that you lay aside the fine of $200 assessed to those who can absolutely not afford it, not pay it. It doesn't sit well with me as a human being and as a pastor. And it seems inconsistent with the values you are otherwise so good at exhibiting. Consider laying aside, just for starters, the $200 assessment, and perhaps being a little more creative about some space that won't hurt anybody if it's slept in. Thank you for listening.
Jean Stacy is next, followed by Sue Sierra Lopez.
Hi, I'm Jean Stacy, 944 West 12th Alley. I wanted to talk a little bit tonight about the idea of doing no harm. As you know, Sleeps has been asking for several things from the council, and tonight I want to focus on just one issue that I hope you will address immediately. And that is the issue of simply not waking someone up between dusk and dawn. Make that a single request. I think it's easy to see how many things can go wrong when you wake people up. One, you're taking a good cop and asking to do something that's pretty heinous and unnecessary, which is wake someone up who might not have been able to sleep for the last week. Think about the person that's woken up. What condition are they in the next day to be able to get their life together so they can get off the street? You want them off. I want them off. But we're interfering with their ability to get off the street. I would like for you, Chris, or Alan, you know, Kitty, George, can you think of a good reason to continue waking people up when they can't go anywhere else? No matter where else they go, they're going to be woken up again, or at least be afraid they're going to be woken up again. You know, George, my, you know, what's the reason? What good is served? We don't want you to quit arresting people in the middle of the night if they're breaking the laws, except for the sleeping law. In the room with us tonight is somebody who, in the last few months, has been chased nine times from their safe campsite. They don't drink, they don't do drugs, they don't have any citations of any kind in their lives. They are just trying to take care of each other, live safely, and get back in the job market. That's all they want. You're making it hard for them, and a lot of other people. So I beseech you, just this one part of Sleep's request, ask your police force not to wake people up between dusk and dawn. And if you can't come up with a really good reason in the next 20 seconds not to do that, maybe it's a good idea to say, "Don't wake them up anymore." Please. Thank you.
Sue Sierra Lopez is next, followed by Zachary Vishinoff.
It was nice to be in the room with all those other tall women. My name is Sue Sierra Lopez. I am in George Brown's Ward. I am also the clinic manager of Occupy Medical. I wanted to give you all a few updates on our clinic. Occupy Medical has been providing consistent professional health care as a free clinic since February of 2012. We have, to date, offered three free medical, three, three free dental extraction clinics in conjunction with St. Vincent de Paul and Medical Teams International. At the last clinic, we served 24 patients and extracted chunks of 48 teeth. Many of our patients arrive at the door just inches from life-threatening septic infections. This Friday, we ran an experimental clinic to see how we could serve the citizens of the Whittaker neighborhood. It turned out beautifully. We will be offering a free clinic at 245 Van Buren Street every Friday from 3:00 to 5:00. Our regular Sunday clinic is in full swing every week at the park blocks from 12:00 to 4:00. We serve an average of 20 to 24 patients a week. We also include free haircuts, warm clothes, and complete holistic clinic services. This Sunday is special to us for two reasons. One, this Sunday, we are offering free DTAP vaccines, that's whooping cough, diphtheria, tetanus, to all uninsured citizens. This clinic has been made possible through our partnership with the wonderful people at Lang County Public Health. Two, I had a delightful meeting today with a young man who works for the city named Michael Wist. He is working hard to help get us a porta potty at the park blocks during our clinic. Last month, I requested that the existing public bathroom at the parcade be left open during clinic times. The last few weeks have been so much easier since this request has been honored. We at Occupy Medical did not ask for a porta potty, so imagine our surprise to hear that we are getting this extra service for our patients and volunteers. This means we will be able to expand our scope of service to families, pregnant women, and the elderly. I really don't know who to thank. I'm beginning to, I'm beginning by thanking each of you for allowing us to continue in our quest to offer health care for all our patients. Thank you, too.
Zachary Vishinoff is next, followed by Michael Carrigan.
Zachary Vishinoff, good to see you guys. It's strange to see you in this building. It's really going to take some getting used to, I guess, since you'll be here a while. I've got to respond to what someone just said about the bike lane you're trying to put down Willamette Street. Now, Willamette Street is congested, and there's a lot of activity there. If you're really concerned about pedestrians or bikes on Willamette, wouldn't somebody have fixed the cracks in the sidewalk over the last years? Even gone with the spray paint, to put like, the glowing kind of spray paint, where you, you know, you could have spent three bucks to do that on the existing Willamette sidewalks, but that hasn't happened. You've got this decaying infrastructure there. Just look a couple blocks away, the slough has completely caved in. What's, how are you going to pay for that? So it looks like the money to put a bike lane down the middle of Willamette Street should have been used to see what to do with the slough where it's caving in by South Eugene High. So, instead of inventing a fake problem and creating this new, huge, expensive, sustainable solution to a fake problem, how about going and looking at the slough and figuring out what you're going to do about it? Because that's a real problem. Do you realize how many new business owners you're going to alienate as you try to push forward with a bike lane down Willamette Street? You've already got a whole army of opposition to MX. It's a culture of saying, "No." And that costs you when you try to hit the public up for money, the wasted MX. Why go down another corridor and alienate businesses one by one? I just, I can't understand it. Before I go, though, I will mention that about nine months, I asked you to have two hearings for U of O on creating a police force. This only happens every 100 years. They've gone ahead with their name change. They're in look-alike mode, so you can barely tell the difference. I think it's better to catch up and have the two hearings I requested. This forum you're designing in April, this outreach, is not at all what I mean. A couple hearings on the process, please.
Michael Carrigan is next, followed by Sabra Markroft.
My name is Michael Carrigan. I'm a proud resident of Ward, Ward 7. I'm also a fan of the women's volleyball team, so I was honored to have them here tonight as well. I recently took part in a forum on housing as a human right with the ACLU. And I was reminded, in the Universal Declaration of Human Rights that was signed in 1948, there's a section deals with housing as a human right. I'm going to read from it briefly. Article 25 says, "Every man has the right to a standard of living adequate for the health and well-being of himself and of his family, including food, clothing, housing, and medical care and necessary social services." So I define housing as not just a house, but a safe place to sleep. So I agree with Helen and Jean that urging the city, the police department, not to interrupt people sleeping between, you know, 9:00 PM and 6:00, or dusk and dawn. I spent the evening in the hospital last week with a friend who was very, very ill. And I was, you know, my sleep was interrupted every hour or two, because the nurses would come in the next day. It was a very challenging day for me, so let's just think of all the people whose sleep was, you know, interrupted during the night, how challenging their next day is. And I think as a human rights city, I think we need to stop that practice. We can do better.
I represent CALC on the board of Opportunity Village Eugene, and we're eager to move forward with the establishment of the Opportunity Village Eugene at the Second and Garfield site. Like you did with approving the Conestoga Huts as tents in the St. Vinnie's camping program, I urge you to urge city staff to move more quickly and make this happen. I was at the fundraiser for the Conestoga Huts at a local restaurant last night, the Cornbread Cafe, and the response was phenomenal. We have raised thousands of dollars for these huts, but we don't have places to put them. And wouldn't it be easier if we had that Garfield site, that 20 huts we have the money for? We could just, you know, put those up in one week. I mean, it's great that they're part of the St. Vinnie's program, but we can do more. So we're just urging you to, you know, to urge city staff to do more, quicken the process. We got to get going on it. You know, it's winter time. People are suffering in our community. And along those same lines, you know, the other recommendations, the task force that I and others was on, let's get on with it. We really got to get all those recommendations and put them in a place where a human rights city has that kind of city. I just think we can do more to help homeless. Thank you.
Sabra Markroft is next, followed by Ally Valkyrie.
Hello, my name is Sabra Markroft. I'm a resident of Ward 7. I brought this as a visual aid. This is a blanket, and were I homeless, it would be illegal for me to possess it the moment it touches the ground. This is a 200 This is a $200 fine. This is a $200 fine currently. This pillow, similarly, can be classed as camping materials if I do not have a home. It touches the ground, it's a $200 fine. This bag, depending on how I'm dressed and how the police officer sees the situation, similarly, it touches the ground, it's a $200 fine. This is not fair to our citizens, housed or unhoused, and it's not fair to the police to expect them to do selective enforcement of a law that is not fair. And many people who know more than I do say is unconstitutional. I would really very much appreciate it if you would take a close look at City Ordinance 4.815 for ways in which we make that ordinance work for the community without marring the constitutional rights of our citizens. Thank you very much. And Counselor Polling, it's so good to see you back at your space, and I wish you a speedy recovery.
Last up, Ally Valkyrie.
Ally Valkyrie, hi. First off, I'd like to thank the council for the amending the city code to allow the Conestoga Huts. As someone who often criticizes the speed of bureaucracy, I was amazed at how quick that went through. I also want to publicly thank the mayor for standing up to the county last week on my behalf. Last month, I was arrested on the Free Speech Plaza, and as a condition of my arrest, the county attempted to exclude me from this entire property. Lane County General Counsel Stephen Dingle refused to grant me an exception to come to this meeting, despite the fact that restricting my access to this forum is obviously unconstitutional. It was made very clear to me that I would be arrested for speaking here tonight, and I was fully prepared to assert my rights and enforce that arrest. But upon learning about the county's unconstitutional behavior, Mayor Piercy stepped in and publicly stated that all citizens are welcome here, despite their objections. And somehow she arranged it so I'm not currently being handcuffed for speaking here, and I thank you for that. The county has recently demonstrated a blatant disregard for the constitutional rights of the people that goes beyond anything I've seen here thus far. I commend the city for standing up for the rights of the citizens to attend these meetings, but recent actions on the part of the county have violated the constitutional rights of many in our community, and I'm concerned about the city's role in these violations. Although the Free Speech Plaza is on county property, Eugene Police are responsible for enforcement on the plaza. And for the past month, our police have been enforcing a nighttime curfew under county orders. Protesters were ordered to vacate and threatened with arrest several times, and last week, 21 people were arrested for asserting their rights in the face of this curfew. That's 21 people that will be processed through the Eugene Municipal Court system at the city's expense due to a county regulation. Many will qualify for court appointing counsel. All are likely to insist on a trial. And if they're found not guilty on constitutional grounds, not just the county, but the city is potentially liable due to the fact that Eugene Police are enforcing this curfew. The county has stepped into an ugly constitutional mess, and I suggest the city wade out of this mess as much as possible and let the county deal with the repercussions on their own. EPD takes orders from council and city manager, and is in both the fiscal interest of the city as well as the constitutional interest of the people. But the council directs EPD to cease enforcing this curfew on the county plaza. Let the county dig their hole. If they want to unconstitutionally force protesters off that plaza, let them use their money, their sheriff's department, their court system, and when the curfew is found to be unconstitutional, let the county deal with the flood of tort claims. But the city should stay out of this mess. Our police should not be participating in the systematic violation of the rights of the people under orders from a county administrator who's on an obvious power trip. Last week, the mayor took a stand against the county to protect my rights. Now I am asking the city council to take a stand to protect the rights of everyone in this community. Thank you.
Let's close the forum and ask if anybody has any comments from the city council. Sorry, you have to sign up. Sorry. So, any comments from the council?
Counselor Taylor. Questions, I suppose, for the city manager. I don't see the attorney here. Is there any way that we can, oh, now I see him. Can we, does the council have the power to say that we won't allow people to be wakened between dusk and dawn?
The council has the ability to change the ordinance. You would have to, or to change the code. That would be the way in which you could do that. In order to change the code, we'd have to prepare the ordinance. You'd have to have a public hearing after the notice required by the charter, and then you could adopt that ordinance. That would be the way to do it. But the council doesn't have the ability to say to the city manager that he shall not enforce a code. The way you have to do that is to change the code.
And that would require a motion and a second?
It would require the council to give direction to the manager to schedule a public hearing on an ordinance, have the public hearing, and then take action.
This would take weeks, right?
Under the, unless the council did what you did with the Conestoga Hut ordinance, where unanimously you agreed to reduce the time that the charter requires for public notice and hearing, if you had unanimous consent, it could be speeded up. Without that, the public hearing could be, would be, where are we? It would be in, beginning of February, and then you could take action after you had the public hearing.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Ellison?
So I'm kind of new at this, and new on the block with this, but considering the conversations that we had during the work session about the state-of-the-city finances and the fact that people who don't have homes usually don't have money and usually don't have jobs, it's kind of counterintuitive to find somebody for, you know, just trying to live, you know, as best they can without shelter. The other thing that struck me was the sleeping issue. I know that we have some issues in terms of, like, every community with crime, but it shouldn't be a crime to go to sleep. And, you know, the other, the other piece of this is, is that I have had direct experience with people who have been in my family, who have become homeless, and that my wife and I have had to, and invited them to stay with us until they were able to gain a home. So I know exactly what these kinds of issues and the impact these issues have on people. For us to, for our police department to be running around and waking people up and issuing citations and fines to people who are doing no more than, you know, trying to get a night's sleep, is just kind of silly to me. And maybe I need some more information, but just on the face of it, I think there are more important issues that the police need to pursue, like drug dealers and prostitutes and property crimes, which run rampant in my ward. So I really want to get some kind of clarity from city staff in terms of how we can address just this problem. We may not be able to address the broad spectrum of the homeless issue in our city right now because of our budget limitations, but at least I think we need to look at these two issues and look at either not enforcing it, I don't want to encourage that, but going back to Counselor Taylor's point, that, you know, we need to go through the proper processes to make the necessary changes to alleviate these issues.
So, I see it looks out here. I'll just weigh in and say, Greg, that the way we address these kind of issues as a council is, if you want an issue to be discussed in a work session, then you ask your fellow counselors, and if you get four of them to agree, then we can have a work session, and then motions can be put forward, and we can move from there. And that's the way, otherwise, we just keep bringing them up, and we talk about them, and they don't, nothing happens because nobody's put them on the table for everybody to examine. So that's the way we do it. If you want something looked at, then talk to your fellow counselors, get, fill out the form, Beth has it, and, and, and take it from there.
All right, I'm ready to scribble when you are.
Okay, all right. So with that, I'm going to, yes?
Well, I just wanted to say I would support having a work session, expediting having such a work session. So I would be one of, hopefully, for votes at least, to have such a work session.
So one of you needs to take the lead and get, get the thing set up and all that. And then George will pop in, and he will say, I mean, Counselor Brown, he'll say, "Well, I have four work sessions in the queue," so, and he's serious. So there you go.
I do, but this is also a very important issue that could take precedence over some of mine. Mine are important also, but this is a big deal.
Okay. So thank you, everyone, for coming and talking about these important issues for the community, from the homeless issues to the huts, to the need for jobs, which we are very acutely aware of, to the transportation planning, to some changes in law that we might need to, want to consider. We appreciate you being here. Thank you. I'm going to move on to the next item. Next up is the consent calendar. And new council president, you want to put the consent calendar on?
I certainly will. I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. Everyone, it passes. Thank you. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, where I adjourn the meeting of the Eugene City Council and convene a meeting of the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency. And that is the adoption of Resolution 1066. City manager?
Mayor, this is really no different than Item C on your consent agenda, and this would have been a consent agenda, other than that the Urban Renewal Agency does not have a consent agenda, and so this is no different than accepting the annual financial report.
The council president?
Yes. I move to adopt a resolution acknowledging receipt of the annual financial report for the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Eugene for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2012.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and Counselor Brown?
Yes, I just have a couple questions. I'm looking at page 32 of the annual financial report for the Riverfront Special Revenue Fund. And I'm looking at the third column over, under actual budget basis. I'm looking under expenditures, and I see that, well, first of all, I'm looking at the revenue, $872,000, from taxes that were diverted from the general fund to this district. And then I see expenditures of $183,000. I'm just wondering, what, what should we spend that money on?
I'll ask Sue or one of her staff to mention that, but also, I just would clarify that the 870, well, I'd just like Sue to answer the question.
So I can't tell you specifically what that money was spent for, but it was spent for staff and their efforts around the riverfront planning that's been happening.
So you would say this is probably more like administration, I guess, an administration expense? Okay. Well, and, and, and there's no, there's currently no bond and indebtedness in this district? There's no, in other words, there's no project that, there's nothing?
Other than the planning that's going on.
Nothing's being built? Yeah. And there are no plans to build anything, specific plans? So I, you know, I just, I'm a businessman. I look, and I go, wow, 18% of the revenue is spent on administration. I'm telling you, that just would not fly in the business world. That wouldn't fly at all. And I, I have some other comments, but I'll save those for when we have our work session. Thank you.
All I was going to say is, I wouldn't want to characterize all this as administration. What I would say is, those employees are actually doing things for the benefit of the district, some of which are planning activities currently underway, for example, the E-Web site and those kinds of things. And so I wouldn't characterize it strictly as administrative.
Okay. Well, I guess what I'm trying to, you know, we're the Urban Renewal Board, and we have the fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers. And I feel that, you know, with the Urban Renewal Agency, I don't think we do a very good job of that. I think we just kind of, you know, we get this, and maybe thumb through it, and then toss it aside, and never really kind of drill down and see what's happening with the money. And I would appreciate, I don't expect it tonight, obviously, but I would really appreciate more of a breakout of that $183,000. And it could be broad categories, but I feel as, as, you know, we're the board, and we're supposed to be watching where this goes, and I see 18% of revenue going into this category. And I really would like to know more, more, not in every last detail, not every dollar, not every group of $50, but I mean, just, I'd like to see a little more fleshing out, please. It's, you know, when you could put that together, I'd really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, ready to vote on this? All those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. Passes, and with that, we are through with the business of the day.